It's nine o'clock, call us out county board supervisors to order. Mr. Bradford, could you give us the invitation?
Yes. Goodness, Father.
Hey, how you doing?
Goodness, Father. Oh, our gracious Father, we thank you today, oh God, for another successful day for allowing us to see one of the days that you're in. And Father, we just ask, oh God, that you continue to look after our elected officials. Father, continue to keep them from any hurt, harm, or danger, Father, continue to give them the wisdom to need your people, Father. Father, we pray for this county, we pray for this city, we pray for this state, and we pray for this country, God. Father, we just pray for our school districts, all our kids at school, and Father, continue to keep them safe, our teachers, our first responders, our doctors, our nurses, and all the workers that work in this county, God. Father, we ask, oh God, to continue to keep them safe. And Father, we just want to pray for any family member that may have lost loved ones over the last week. Father, continue to strengthen, oh God, and give them the courage, oh God. And Father, we thank you, we ask you, and pray so, Jesus, amen.
All right, y'all gonna come up front and do the face flag, they're gonna stay right there. Face flag. If there's one of y'all gonna lead it off, you want me to lead it off?
Start it off.
Y'all ready?
Sure, y'all.
I'm flagging.
The United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Look ahead.
Yeah, turn it way.
Come on back. Hey, man. Come back here. Oh, yeah.
That's the bed, I'll be all over here. Okay, we're gonna give y'all a certificate of appreciation for y'all coming today. Chandler, is it Boobier?
Boobier.
Boobier, which is Booby.
Ellis.
Looks like he wanna speak up there. Don't blame you, I was shy too, y'all. Still am. Oh, David. Bialy, I like that.
Ain't no good about that.
Jake Sapper, that was an easy one there now, no problem with that. Matthew Dixon, I knew that was you, I heard you talking over there. Musician of basketball, Aspen Wesley. Carlos Denny. Thank y'all very much, appreciate y'all. You gotta hurry up there today.
I ain't, I'm a while.
You got a date?
Sorry, I'm trying to get my seat.
Hurry up, smile.
Thank y'all.
How you doing? Good to see you.
How's it going?
Good to see you. Y'all can go upstairs and do a tour right there.
Appreciate y'all coming.
Back, you say it's my pleasure.
Okay, I'm gonna roll call. Mr. Gray?
Present.
Ms. Hutchins?
Present.
Mr. Gaines? Is not here, I believe.
He's gonna be running late.
Okay. Mr. Middleton?
Present.
Paige Dean?
Present.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Stephanie Washington?
Present.
She's on the phone. And Mr. Slower?
Here.
And I am here. Okay, first thing I need is approval of the docket, if I need a motion. Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Hi. Motion carries.
Do all of y'all get that to us that we'll be giving one or two in late a few? You'll name.
Okay. All right. Special presentations today? Any? County business, uh, Debbie Hudson, sustainability partners.
Good morning, just wanted to keep you up with a few things that we're working on. You got an email inviting you to go visit Simpson County prison on Thursday.
Is that?
Yes, you and the committee. And we'll be leaving at eight o'clock from the sheriff's office, he has a band if you want to go that way. It takes two hours to get there, we'll have an hour tour, and then we'll probably get something eaten. Okay, now, you say this is Jefferson Davis?
Simpson.
Simpson County.
This is an inmate van.
It's a new van.
I've been tricked a few times, haven't I?
Where's the sheriff? Yeah, he's not here.
It happened in the military.
They're gonna get permission to drive, sure.
But anyway, if you would let me know by tomorrow, I need to get something to David so that they're prepared how many we have. But, yes.
How many can we?
The grand whole? I think fifteen, I think.
Oh, okay. How many we got going?
Right now, we only have, I'm gonna send another reminder out, people have told me, but
Well, you do have.
There's seventeen on the committee, and you are, who was invited.
I, I, I'm just gonna give a motion. If you do have too many, I'm gonna complete it. If you do have too many, if you don't, then I'm gonna ride with y'all.
All right. I think you're solidly saying.
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Motion, in case the van's too full for Mr. Gray to take his county vehicle.
I really think it's a good opportunity.
Moved by Mr. Gray, seconded by Ms. Hutchins.
That's gonna be by you in the supervisor, put it by you in the supervisor, you have a traffic on.
Good. We will also probably simply have videos.
All right, I need to carry this motion, though. All approved. Motion carried.
We also will have possibly one or two videos of other prisons, jails, but it just seems like if you see the mortar and, you know, just to look at it. And this one's gonna be comparable to what we're looking at, a hundred and fifty beds, hundred point five, hundred and fifty beds. And also with the mental health and the things we wanted, and the judges, we're gonna have to put there too. All right. Other quick two things where we are, we're still in the process of getting an appraisal. Scott, do we think we'll get that maybe this week, next, hopefully?
I thought we had received it already. I emailed him on Friday to get an update with him, I'll check in back, he usually gets done real fast.
And that leads to working on a contract with the company to get that settled, trying to get all this by, hopefully May first. And then along with that, from David, we need a, there's a survey out there, but it's not complete enough. So we need that, and we also need, let's see, a wetland study and a soil sample. And according to the owner before, if they did it, he really didn't know it, he doesn't have that information. To do that with David, we have to have a resolution that we're going to work with him. And I still don't have an amount, Scott, but at some point, we're gonna need to do a resolution if we're gonna work with him. Which you've already said that you've given permission to talk to him, so.
Resolution he's asking for today, does the county need expenditures? It's asking him to be selected as kind of the project manager for a jail. If we use expenditures and whatnot, he'll come to you beforehand and get prior approval. For example, to bother being soil sample, he would have to get permission from the board, it wouldn't go to him, he'd have to hire an engineer firm, civil engineer firm to do that. So what he's asking for is if he has anything binding to the county or he committed to the money, it's just asking to make him the project manager of the jail.
Okay, and who are we talking about?
This is Fish Marsh.
Okay. Okay.
This works for us for about ten years.
Yeah, I know, I just want, I need to make sure everybody else, including Paige, did. Okay, you need a, we need a motion for that?
Yeah, you need a motion, a resolution.
Okay, motion for the resolution.
So.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All right, all approved. Motion carries. Okay, thank you.
I, I got a question. Did I hear you say a hundred and fifty beds?
Hundred and twenty-five, what was it, Scott? Well, that's what they're, that's, that's what we're in process of working, a hundred and twenty-five, hundred and fifty.
Why so many?
It's a, it's a, because right now, a hundred, you have sixty over there, and I think thirty or something over here already. And if we work to get the federal, I mean, the federal courthouse, and if you do mental health too, that's what.
I remember going to be held in this jail.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Chandler, Russ, you're up.
Oh, I'm up.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, okay, just presenting, I'm gonna put this down. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. We were asking the board, this is the first draw out of the, the funds for the levy, this is the beginning hearing, from, from Neil Schaefer. And so, we're, we're requesting the board approve the invoices that they've presented to the board. And Paige has all of this, and we've, we've looked at it and verified it and made sure that, you know, from our side, that it was, that it was in good working order. Total amount of requests is fifty-three thousand. That's, that's out, coming out of the one point eight two five, one point eight two five nine seven seven million that the state has, the NDA has given us. And so, we're requesting that you approve the first draw out of that, out of those funds.
Or is that what was budgeted for? For that part of the project?
That is part of the project.
So, is it on this docket?
Yeah, it goes to the docket after, the way that.
After we approve it, then go to the docket.
That's how everything goes with our construction, with engineers first approves and then goes.
Okay, I need a motion.
Amen. And that's why you say this is for the engineer only?
For the engineer only, yes.
Okay, so.
Motion by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Motion carries. Is that all you have, Tim?
Well, we've got a, I, I, in, in executive session, I've got a, I'm asking the board for just a very cursory support letter for a project that we're working on that they're, that we're going through right now. So it will require the captain's signature, but it's not, it's nothing that's binding or anything like that, but it is a confidential client right now. So they're looking for, for a letter of support, so I'm trying to get, get that on the, on the agenda. The other thing too, for the board, and open session, we will have an announcement on April thirtieth. And so, we, we won't, you'll be receiving today, kind of say that Dave knows for, for that event. So, but we're, we're excited to be putting that forward and, and doing that. So just go ahead and put it on your calendar for eleven o'clock, April thirtieth is the, is the date.
Okay, hopefully within the next forty-five minutes, we'll be talking to you in the executive session, I think we're trying to get this through.
I'm just, Mr. President, Scott. He just want a letter of support, you got the copy of the letter?
I did.
I'm trying to just save you some time, so, and figure out if we need him to be here for just a letter of support. Unless you just wanna be.
You don't wanna update us with the project.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
That's all I have.
Have we heard about the project before?
The one that's been announced.
No, 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 you have.
All right. Thank you. All right, city government, business, if any? All right, departmental reports, Ms. Thales, I'm sure you wanna go first?
Good morning.
Morning.
And it fails to be known when it's banned. I don't have there much this morning, but I want to get approval for Sarah Davis to travel to two places, the Big Spur, for her recertification, that's gonna be on April twenty-third and I think April twenty-fifth. You have that?
Yeah, I do. Okay, so she gonna be staying in a hotel?
No, she's driving back and forth.
Oh, just six hundred and sixteen dollars, thirty-two cents.
That, that's included.
Oh, registration, three hundred dollars, okay.
Yeah, that, that includes her registration.
Okay, now I need a motion.
So.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. All in favor? Motion carried. Is that all you have?
No.
Okay.
I wanna announce that this week is National Telecommunicator Week for our telecommunicators. That's a big deal to me, because that's the time that we show our appreciation to our telecommunicators. And I will be honoring them every day this week for their dedication and hard work that they actually deserve. And I do appreciate that. So if you all run across a telecommunicator this week, you can just thank them for what they do. So I want to record that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Xavier Hutchins, I'm the Assistant Purchase Clerk. And I'd just like to spread across the minutes for the procurement card for the month of March.
Okay. Need a motion? Moved by Mr. Middleton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hutchins. All in favor? All right. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Joe Bellin with the Intervention Court, I submitted a letter for a request to apply for a grant, four-year grant, along with some information with that letter. It's gonna be similar to the grant that was awarded to Adams County back in two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
Just need approval to be able to apply.
Am I gonna have any documentation on that? Do you have, do I have any documentation on that?
I gave it to Ms. Corbett, maybe it just didn't, I didn't get it over here, I can give you my copy, but I have.
Oh.
Is it a match?
I did not see it.
Yeah, I just.
You have a match?
He asked us, there a match to that grant?
I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, I, I'm being told that it's probably up to a million dollars that we can get over the four years. But I don't know if there's a match.
He does, my grant is reappointed.
Is it a match, Scott?
Need a copy of yours at this time. Mr. Bellin, can you tell us what this grant is for again?
It's gonna be for the Drug Intervention Court.
Drug Intervention.
Okay, while she's making this topic, I've got a letter here from Ms. Black, reappointing Joseph Bellin, fifty-eight thousand dollars a year, for the Intervention Court coordinator.
Tell him that he needs to sign, correct? You're just getting permission to apply for it.
We just need to spread it across, man, we need a motion to.
Not that yet.
I just read, I just read that, 'cause I thought you got to make copies, right?
This is nothing that you need to sign, he's just asking permission to apply.
Okay, need a motion?
Do we need an option for to?
Right, okay. Need a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Gray. All in favor? But since I've got this motion approved, so you're good. Do you have something else, Joe?
I have an email you guys submitted to train Slower last Friday, the email, that I can just get spread across the minutes.
What is it?
I wouldn't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna run it across, well.
I think, Judge.
Which company is it, Joe?
It's just between the accountability recovery court and the Florida supervisor.
Okay.
We need somebody to serve as a fiscal agent for the adult drug program, which is what we've been doing for years. It says they'll maintain the project in the county's regulatory, they have two west funds that they've been referring for.
Okay.
This is someone at Carmen, I'm sorry, Judge Drake, Judge. Is it Drake?
Drake.
Sorry, I always call. That she drafted out, she told me about it, I'm looking at it right now, it's one page, she did, so it's okay. What we've been doing.
So we need a motion, spread across the minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I need a motion for that. Any more?
Tell me what it is again, why I can make a motion?
This is an agreement with the drug court, the county serving as the fiscal agent. Basically, we receive funds and expend funds, you know, on behalf of the drug court, pretty much how we've been doing.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Gray.
Sir.
Seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All.
Motion carried. Okay, and I, I started reading this, reappointing you as the coordinator for Intervention Court. We need to spread across the minutes. Yes, fifty-eight thousand dollars.
So.
Move by Ms. Hutchins, seconded by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Motion carries. I need a sign. Thank you, Joe. All right. Next?
Good morning, boy.
Good morning.
San Antonio Baptist Service Officer, just completed my training last week down on the coast, everything went well, learned a lot. Made a few more contacts if I needed some help. Found out that next year I should be qualified to go to the national conference. But once I find some more details, I'll give you guys a mention of. Also attended the Small Business Association on Friday, got some good information, put it back out fast on to the day, so. That's, that's about it for this. Y'all have any questions for?
Congratulations on getting through that.
Yes.
Thank you.
You got any more, come in, come in.
I got one more this, this fall. And then next year, they supposed to be trying to get me involved with the national PAs, so. Would you be real good, I'd be certified through the national agency, so.
So we got veterans over there pointing.
Yes, indeed.
That's great.
Appreciate you.
We just do, I'm happy about that, and as soon as I get some more information by June fifteenth, I'll pass it on to the board to let them know what's going on.
I appreciate your help and all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradford?
Boy, boy, just got a couple things, first of all, request travel for myself and some members on my staff, we gotta go to Clay County County for our regional plan review, and that's gonna be on Wednesday.
Need a motion? Ms. Hutchins, all right, I need a second.
Second.
Mr. Gray? Any discussion?
You and who? Oh, you, oh.
No, 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 just certain laws.
Who, who are they?
That breed and kind of being.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor? All right. Motion carries.
As, as we know, we did secure our twenty-five thousand dollars monies from them to go towards our showers at the second floor. So right now, we're just waiting for the grant, comfortable on that. Just need to brief them on that. But that, that's about it, I wanna thank everybody, and we have some, some good weather coming through, it wants to be in the flex.
We need to basically review the declaration that we made, and I would assume we don't need to.
No, we don't, we do, yeah, we do.
But we still need to go and approve the initial declaration, but state that ended, that there's no reason to carry it on.
Do you want your son, I mean, I have it.
No, no, we got, we.
When we used that was the day.
The one that Scott.
There was, the president declared an emergency the day before the severe weather was supposed to come and delayed opening county offices. The board has to review it when the president makes the declaration approved. And, but of course, we were very lucky, even whether, Miss Dust sing.
Less.
Above us and below us, so. Absolutely less, so, but, but we need a motion for that.
So move. Second.
Any discussion about that? Okay. All? You all in favor, vote aye? Motion carries. That's been followed up by a signature, right? Okay, Bradford?
Also, as we know, we've been utilizing Code Red for a long time here in this county. Over the recent years, they've started increasing up on our annual fees. So I wanna ask the board if it's okay that I go and negotiate with them, see if we lower those like we did last time. If not, we probably start to get another carrier. Because, yeah, they're, we have now like nine thousand ninety back in the twenties. So we need to try to do some negotiating. There's a lot of great early learning systems out there. Code Red, they do, they're doing some good to them. But, you know, going forward, I think that's, that's kinda expensive for the amount of time we use. So just wanna ask the board to give me permission to go start looking at other carriers.
Okay, I need a motion.
I move to give him permission to look at other carriers.
And negotiate, and negotiate with Code Red? Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hutchins. Any discussion? Yes.
If we were to go another route, would there be, would all these residents who are signed up for Code Red have to enter another?
Normally, that data should transition over. It should.
Shouldn't, ain't good enough.
Right, but I'm saying that at some point, do we, you know, call them up and say, hey, we don't need to be utilized like, like we've been good to them for even a year.
I mean, it's just been such a process to get these people to sign up for Code Red.
Right, but all that data, I'm saying that all that data belongs to Adams County. Yeah, so I think, Scott, we can get it, if they don't want, get that information through, we probably do legal, because they have to get that to us, because that would those our residents. But we had to do about that platform, so. But they don't, I'll be in negotiation on that, and for the board, before we make a decision on that, and I get that decision with you guys, you know, couple of.
All in favor? Motion carries.
That's all I have, any questions? Last thing, the long-term recovery committee, I do need some volunteers from each y'all districts, if possible, I need at least one. Unless I have to have representation from every district to sit on the long-term recovery committee, to be a part of it.
Mr. President? Yeah. What would their responsibilities be?
Their responsibility, this committee oversees the funding that we get from grant monies.
Okay.
Like, we have residents that don't have issues, if we have to clarify this, that's the count. Those individuals would look over and make sure those residents live in that, that live in your district, and we are able to provide the help for them. Because we don't do it, I don't want to just get somebody from one district and they don't. Cause we don't do it, I don't want to just get somebody from one district and they only take care of their residents. So that's why I want to make sure we get every resident across the county.
Okay, uh, when do they meet?
Well, I just need names if they want to, yeah, cause once we get informed, we gotta, I gotta get the members first, then have them come back and
I just don't want to submit somebody to you and then they say, oh man, I can't meet, they meeting on some, 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 then I gotta turn around and go find somebody else.
And, and like I said, this, this is a good program.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, and there's a lot of money out there that we, they can get to help the residents. But we just can't do it as a government body. We could be the funnel for, but we can't manage it. Then we have to have a long-term company that does that. So I, I have a person in place that have a five O one C three, but they need board members. Cause they can't do it so long, so, y'all know the body that want to help, you know, give back to the community that way. It is, like I said, they don't meet like, you know, every week and nothing like that. It's just, you know, they're, they're recorded, and when we have storms and stuff like that, they come through my office and we set them, move off into the process.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright, thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Sheriff, we're far courted. All I have is, uh, US Forest Reserve will be burning one thousand two hundred fifty-five acres a day. And it's in smoke, be heading toward a cramp field and eighty-four years. So linear, I know we done let the fire department know, and dispatch also.
Okay.
What about the residents?
Uh, we gotta put something out there.
But you're starting getting calls from the residents.
That you got a letter.
Yeah. Residents should have been informed.
Yeah, well, I mean, we just got them, so we had to try to get it out.
Yeah, they don't give you much notice, do they?
Can you do it on a Code Red? Maybe put it out on Code Red?
Right, we just gotta get it out. Okay, that's all I have.
Alright, there, thank you. Who's next? Tim? You need to give report? Okay, you just hang around, okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Leness Smith, South Weston City Plant Development District, a few things this morning. Uh, on March the fourth, the board approved for USDA applications, a little for, uh, restroom at the second floor. Um, I need more permission for President Wilson to execute the USDA application pages that he has to sign. Uh, he does have those signature pages already, so he's got permission, uh, to execute those.
Is that that twenty-five thousand dollars that Brad was just talking about? Is this is something different?
It's same thing.
Same thing?
So, with the match, um, USDA will pay, um, fifty-five percent. The, the total amount of the project was sixty-two thousand or something. So fifty-five percent is what, uh, USDA will, well, they told me fifty, the minimum fifty-five, not the minimum, they go from fifty-five percent. The county is grant eligible fifty-five percent, they can go up to seventy-five. But what I did on the match resolution, I put it at fifty-five percent from that sixty-two thousand, so that left twenty-eight thousand.
That county has to pay?
Mine's a twenty-five thousand, that Mina's paying, so that leaves the county with three thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Okay.
So, um, that's, um, we've already, um.
You need a motion for that?
No, ma'am. Well, yeah, going on straight across the minutes that, uh, the county's portion will be two thousand two hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And that Mina is contributing twenty-five thousand.
Motion by Ms. Hutchins.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Gray, any discussion?
And that's the motion for to execute the signature pages.
All in favor? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. The second thing I have, um, also on March the fourth, the board gave someone some permission to apply for funding through the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the, um, restrooms for the ball field. I have yet to receive any kind of spoken word or prices on that from Mr. Joseph Burr. I don't know what the board wants to do in reference to allowing him to do that work, um, this branch dude made the ninth. So I'm trying to see what's, what's an update.
What you need?
Did you email him?
I have, I have, um.
I think we got a payment for his work, don't we?
You did.
You have what?
That was his correspondence away.
His work, his architectural work, the drawings and what have you on the basements, they gotta have a, they gotta have technical drawings to submit to.
I know, we had not heard back from him since then, but, you know, he was talking about that eight percent of, you know, using his drawings or something like that, we didn't have eight percent. So my thing is, um, that, that day forward, we hadn't heard back from him on anything.
And I've also reached out to him to see if he would come back and forth for good, getting permission for plans, but I guess he hasn't.
Scott, have you had any contact with him? I mean, I mean, obviously we gotta pay him for his drawing.
So, Mr. President?
Yes.
Plan A ain't working, okay, plan B, can we go to the other guy and see can we get this?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah, we can go with somebody else, yeah.
I mean, plan A ain't working, and she got a deadline, we need this.
How thorough it is that that need to be?
I have to have the, the quote, the price breakdown, um.
An estimate?
Estimate and.
Is it quotes or just an estimate?
Um, it'll be, it'll be a, uh, architectural estimate.
Cause she just sent you the information and then we try to find.
Yeah, I might ask Robbie, or we could ask the contractor that worked on it there, that's your option, or you can ask him at the architect.
I know, I know the contractor worked with him on those drawings.
Yeah.
You want to do that?
They don't need a complete architectural drawing, do they just need a, the basics or?
Yes, just, uh, pretty much a, a layout of how it would look and how much it would cost.
Okay.
And I'm a little bit, I think that Mr. Joseph, he already has it. He just has not been, he don't want to release it.
We're gonna reach out to the contractor as well, see him and see if we, we figure something out, you need it.
But I have reached out to him on two different pages.
Okay.
The second thing I have in reference to the Land and Water Conservation Fund, I held a public hearing on April fifth. And I just need permission, um, and I will give page these public hearing minutes. Uh, just approval to, um, that the public hearing was held on April fifth.
You need it.
Board President's signature.
We need to spread that across the minutes? I need a motion to spread.
The public hearing minutes.
Public hearing minutes.
I know that we spread the public hearing across the minutes.
Second by Ms. Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? Alright, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Thank you. She's got her folder.
Thank you.
Alright, who's next, they'll, they'll be back.
Good morning, boy.
Good morning.
Hey, Ron.
Good morning. First of all, uh, I'd like to put a big thank you out to the D. I. One Department, uh, four sheriff deputies and some AMRs, I had an emergency in my family, uh, last Thursday, uh, and the response time and what they did, uh, as they say, my brother's life, so I didn't want to put you out. Two of those, um, people that was involved, the sheriff department I know was Ms. Bass, Mr. Swatchire, Mr. Dorsey, Karen Ewing, uh, responding from the sheriff department. Uh, had two AMR, uh, showed up and then they sent another ambulance, uh, to get her, we went to bed, sent her to Jackson by helicopter, but I do want to thank those people.
And update?
Got her back home last night, but we're still unsure of what we're gonna do, you know, we've got some decisions to make, you know, from me and my brother. Uh, what we don't do is what I support.
Play that all work down so far.
Thank you. Next thing I have is, uh, school derby request at one eighty, Lewis Drive.
To Lewis Drive?
Yeah, Lewis Drive.
Okay, I got it. Got school derby request.
Sir.
Second by Mr. Gray here. Uh, all in favor? Alright, motion carried.
I have been possible illegal dump site, one oh six, the train circle, um, Mr. Gray, you called me, I hope, two, three weeks ago, which the week somebody was dumped in town, we got there, they were gone. But I did take pictures, and that is the pictures, uh, that's happening, it's right there by a house, I don't know somebody who do what. Uh, but like I said, I guess it's on the road, fault responsibility, or say responsibilities, we won't do this thing, this dump site, I just need to get approval.
I'm gonna make a motion to, you gonna clean this up, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Clean up this, uh, leave a dump site at one oh six, the train circle.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Middleton. Any discussion?
I do have some discussion with the president. Uh, I don't even know, can we do it, but, uh, that house I'm looking at, I, I would love to check the apartment, somebody knocking on that door, find out if they seen anybody dump this out there. Uh, but it's ridiculous, man. I was out of town, that's why he not called you. But, um, I'm gonna go knock on the door myself.
Did the landowners do it?
I, I don't know, when I got there, they were gone, we go, uh, Mr. Gray, uh, called me, I went straight out there and they wasn't there, but that's what was there. But I, I.
Okay, I got a motion by Mr. Gray, second. Why Wes, okay. Alright, any more discussion? All in favor? Alright, motion carried. I need a picture back.
Then the thing I have, uh, Mr. Middleton, we need to discuss, uh, and I know we have, but, uh, the accomplish point when we got to do that, of what we can or how we, I know that we were, have to have engineers involved, the way you're understanding, and planning to me, but I just need some guidelines of which way to go. When we get dry well, we won't get that.
Yeah, when we were awarded that money, what, a year ago?
Yes.
Uh, I, I was told at state level, it didn't require an engineer, uh, that we could use all the money for a project.
And I'm a conservative option to it.
Yeah, I mean, I know, there was summer coming on.
Yeah, I mean, while it's dry, river's low, we need to get it done.
Yeah, we need to move forward.
It's on the rise.
That's just something on my list. Uh, the conference in, uh, June, June the tenth to the thirteenth, I need to get approval for the board for, uh, Meg, Cam, and myself to, uh, try to, it's already been done, I know rooms has already been booked, but I did that for something.
I did, when I did that, I did.
Thank you. Alright, um. Mr. Ford, please, um, I know Mr. Gray, you was asking about six lands down, you know, about the off in the backyard, I know we've had some more rains, some more issue. I guess I just need to know what's different. That's all the project, I mean, I can't.
I mean, it's all a project, and I talked to the contractor about it, they don't feel comfortable touching that part of the project, they feel that touch that is gonna cause domino effect, and it's gonna keep moving down. So, I, what wants us to proceed with that, so there's no.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna tell you like this, um, seem like every time, uh, some come up, is always off the project with them. And I got a problem with that, uh. I'm just, I'm just like this, when, when we do EWP projects, and you take the existing soil off of these people property to, where you don't have to bring soil in, to me, you're creating a problem. And that's happened on several EWP projects where they using the people existing soil to try to stabilize some, when they supposed to be bringing soil in. And they making the project bigger than it's supposed to be. I've been doing EWP projects for, with David Gardner for sixteen years, and I, I'm not no dummy on EWP projects, but I got a problem with that. I mean, they gonna continue to do EWP projects with this county, in some kind of way, they gonna have to stand behind their work. Cause, uh, it, it's, it's not up to the county to stand behind their work, and, and when I first went out there and looked at this, uh, area, it had a whole lot of soil out there. And to my knowledge, I thought they was supposed to be bringing a whole lot of soil in, not cutting all the soil that belongs to those people down, using it trying to stabilize their project, because I, I, I understand that when they, when, when we go to Washington to try to get the funds, it take a whole year. And the project done got worse. And when they bid on a project, it's really not enough money to do the project. So they use some of those people's soil and create more of a problem than anything. I got a problem with that, man. And it's always out of the scope of work. But you, you, you take the bottom part on the ramp, and where, and where erosion at is, is, is out of the scope of work, but you gonna went all the way over to Scott, and erosion is where Wes said. I don't understand how that's out of the scope of work.
A lot of the project required them to bring in dirt from a dirt pit or, uh, uh, secondary summers? Are they, are they allowed to work off this?
It all depends on, um, what the system site asks, and if we have enough on-site materials to backfill.
I, I guess in the future, if there's a way to specify that, that you're not, we're not gonna rob dirt from this spot to move over here and create another spot down, down the road.
It's confusing the landowner, because they thinking they, they finna get something stabilized right here, and then you go get all their soil from over there and bring it over here. Still, uh, bringing your own soil in, and, 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 and it's not that expensive, cause you using their soil, but you also creating a problem for them down the road, that's just the way I see it. I, I don't agree with that.
Okay.
And, and in the near future, if you gonna take, uh, use somebody else's soil, least they need to know about it. They don't need to know on the back end, when the project is already done, they come out of here, like, what happened over there? You, you gonna use all their soil?
Okay.
Okay, the next one is thirty-five Scotland Drive, y'all, the board approved for IMS to go out and look and see. Uh, about sort of redesigning that was a project that was done by a contractor, EWP, this field that's probably three years old, two to three years old, and it's, uh, a lot of maintenance, the last big rain we had two, three weeks ago, undermined and whole, it's left out. The last meeting at thirty-five Scotland Drive, so last meeting, you'll go over, uh, give IMS permission to look at it, if maybe you can look at it.
Where's the survey?
Uh, and that's what, you know, we all get permission, certainly give a cop estimate for it, boy. Uh, the next thing I have is one eleven Hammont Street that I come, uh, Mr. Carter, I believe is my name, coming last board meeting. Uh, the engineers, myself, and all of them went back out, looked, they, they looked too tired for his rightways and kid fighting rightways, I got with, uh, Dennis and the waterworks we met out, they do have, uh, right away, the city does for a lift station right way through there, but it's not only drainage issue that Mr. Carter's talking about, I just want to give the board an update that I did me with the city, uh, forward and Mr. Gaines.
I thought y'all said y'all wouldn't let me go to child, but I guess y'all.
I told Mr. Gaines called me, but I didn't get called.
Yeah, uh, he told me he was going.
And I know South Will've been trying to help him out, if I could do it myself.
Uh, anyhow, we met in.
So what was the, what was the outcome?
Waterworks has a twenty-foot deep, ten foot from center of their pipe, roughly center of their pipe, either way, and it's from a lift station at the end of Hammont, that goes to, uh, Oakland.
So let me ask you a question.
Line that goes to.
Let me ask you a question. Uh, Hammont, the back of Hammont
Correct.
joins in with the back of Oakland.
Yes.
Which was a street or something, looked like it, went between those two properties, so that ain't a easement, uh, uh, who that belongs to? Don't buy one claim? See, that's really not needed to be there, because it's on here, where Oakland in here, Hammont in here, it shows a street was in between those two properties. This is the city, this is the county. This is the city, this is the county. Somebody got it on there. And that's where the problem is, to me.
I was saying, y'all was too good for time, can't find me.
I ain't saying the county got it even, but the city went back there and, 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 and did something back there. How did they get back there if they ain't have it? They just went back there.
Yeah, I guess they got the even through this property from the original, or from the land, previous landowner before him to come through that property. Uh, but he's, you know, I don't think he had any knowledge of what was in there. He just had an idea when through there, cause he could see it's a P B C pipe, and then he ended up being a P B C five B C. His previous landowners put it in there, trying to get there, eroding on their property, but what's in it is the waterworks. Waterworks got a two inch line. What he was seeing was a sixty P B C pipe that had nothing to do with the waterworks.
So on Hammont, we have drainage on Hammont, and the water goes through the drain, where is it coming out of it?
In the creek.
Where is the creek?
Behind his house, or, this house to the left of this house. The water coming through, I guess through those neighborhoods and draining through that ditch.
You heard what you just said. So the water coming out of county road, going through a drain, behind this person's house, and is eroding, but it ain't nobody fault. That's, that's, that's it. Yeah, it's coming out the road, going into a drain, draining behind his house.
So where, whoever the road, if they see the county, that's who fault it is.
Well, you, what you gotta figure, how, how long ago did Hammont addition get built? Seventy years?
I don't know.
Oh, I, I don't know that we ever, but, but, his property line is, is really what, what, we have to watch, because you know, we can't get on private property.
They got a.
Now, they, somebody brought, built that subdivision and turned it over to this county.
So is that the county road?
The drainage ditch is off his property. What he's really concerned in, and I'll show you some pictures here, is, is, he's concerned with on his property. And the water is, it's coming through his backyard, off his property, down through, and it's been eroded, and you can see where somebody's built before, trying to build retaining the, the burst of water, and now it's gone, but it's, it's not coming out of that ditch, eroding what he's saying, talking about in his, in his yard. And that's what he's concerned. What's coming through that ditch is gonna do, it's behind his property line. So it's not, that's not really interfering with his property or the erosion. So, uh.
So is the county road, the way this rain coming off of?
Coming through his backyard. See in the past, see those, where they put these up, that tree, that's a tree of his feet. See, there's the same building. There's a drainage ditch behind the fence back here that comes down and goes through. It's a drain, and see, that's not the cause of this issue. And that's the problem he was wanting there, was wanting somebody to get that tree up that had fell in his backyard. And he got most of it up, and it's like, I said, the remainder of it is what he's had in county for several months.
County can't go, county, I mean, county can't go on.
Correct, that's property. And that's where he was talking, it was easement back there, would go to the easement to find the easement up, yeah, find that up.
That's Hammont.
Okay.
That's Oakland. That's a road. That's his house.
That's the yellow in the property line.
The yellow. Yeah, cause that's the city right there. If you hit it.
There's a twenty foot there, it's not claimed by anybody.
That's his property right here. So you got a road going all the way through there, all the way up, all the way to the street.
It's not a road, it's a, it's a rightway, somebody's rightway.
Somebody, I mean, it, it gotta be belongs to somebody.
They can't find. Okay, uh, what, I asked, what, what's your mind?
Next thing I have, uh, from that is two more rightway issues or easements, uh, between the church and the health department. I'd like for, uh, I M S to look at it. I know they looked at it before, couldn't find a rightway in there, but I want to look again, they're calling it, anybody. It's a drainage on two. That property goes out through the creek, and it's drop boxes, and there's curb drains off the parking lots of the church and the health department, but in the past.
That we own?
Well, uh.
That I'm talking about the.
The health department, along the church. And that's what they're trying to figure out who on what in the drainage ditch that Mr. Ford was gonna look, and he looked in the past, and and in the past, he didn't find anything, but I'd like for the board to give permission again to look for that, and while you do that, at one oh eight and one ten Cottage Drive, it's a drainage, it's a drain. That's a division that the people's calling about. That's one we know, is it the county's or the landowner?
What, what's that?
One oh eight, between one oh eight and one ten Cottage Drive. And I would like to see if Mr. Ford could find easement on that.
So, so we need a motion to let Mr. Ford do one, between one oh eight and one ten Cottage Drive, and also between health department and the church?
And the church.
Off, uh, Liberty Road?
Right here off of, uh, by, home, like, right on sixty-one, I know where the health department is.
Oh, okay.
And the church right beside.
Okay.
And this is all for drainage, for checking?
Yes.
Need a motion for those two items for, uh, Mr. Ford to look at.
To do for an easement?
Easement, correct.
I go to give I M S and Mr. Ford permission to look for easement where?
Between one oh eight and one ten Cottage Drive, and between the health department and the church on sixty-one.
I'm not much.
Second by Mr. Milton. Any discussion? All in favor?
That's all.
Okay. All right.
Thank y'all.
Robbie, I, I'm sorry, I tried to, I called you on Thursday, but I didn't make it, had all that going on, but I appreciate Tim taking care of that on, on Dunbar Road.
Right, sit back.
Oh, how much of that road, how far off that road, we got eight, eight or ten feet, uh, off, uh, Dunbar to, to where that washout is? Uh.
Probably our rightways, you know, they, they vary throughout the county, but a lot of it, you know, was twenty foot off the center line.
It's not the same one I captured, that is it?
Right before you get through the craters over there, it's on the run.
Yes, it is. And we put barricades there in our, so, so, power line through there, and we put some barricades, but it's, you know, uh.
I didn't know when you put a guardrail there.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, just cause it's in a curve.
Be a drag, I'm waiting on the rain event to try to get it.
He already had documentation of it, he was waiting to submit it.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, well, we got all that, and I'm just waiting, I'll have to turn around and try to turn it forward, pretty quick, and I'd like to, like, make sure it's, uh, effectively good for me.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Robbie, I sent you the, the letter from Dozier, did you see that? That she texted for you?
Uh, I had seen it, it's about the gravel.
Yeah, on Little Woodville Road.
Well, the Little Woodville Road's a dirt pit. Uh, that's a dirt pit, he's trying to get, uh, get the board to sign to, you know, let them access the road out of that pit, out their house, and the issue with that, that's what that's about. Uh, then I got another issue with that, not that, but with that.
Oh, okay, and next time, you, do you have a motion for what you're talking about with the Dozier?
Yeah, Dozier's requesting, he's asking N D U Q for permit to do.
He got a permit of dirt pit on Little Woodville Road, and was it gonna do that, you know, access the road off his property, coming out of the road, he puts, or again, got all that, I mean, he's just gonna do where he's coming in and out of the property, you know, obviously, it's there.
And we, the county, to do what?
The county has to say a letter that we don't have an objection to them operating the dirt pit off Little Ramble Road. They said that they might go within, come within a hundred feet of Little Woodville Road, and so that's why the county might have an objection, to compromise.
Being, you know, being in the dirt, so you're gonna wait, try to do the level.
So, they gonna be hauling trucks in and out of there?
One part of Little Woodville Road.
Uh, that's where we were hauling before, right up, uh, before we get close to that drive on the left, there, uh, probably mile, mile and a half of Little Woodville Road.
I don't think I know what you're talking about.
So are they gonna be responsible for any damage to our county road?
He should be.
I ain't know it shouldn't, and we don't give him permission.
That road, if it tears broken, I mean, they should be responsible. I mean, most of the people that are doing that.
Well, let me ask this question. Do we have any, I know we have something in place to hold people accountable for when they tear up the county road, when they hauling, uh, uh, stuff in big trucks.
Correct.
So then, that'll, that'll take care of it.
Okay, so we need a motion to give, so that we don't have a problem with Dozier hauling dirt on Little Woodville Road?
Yeah, we will for one bit.
This is.
Robbie's.
Okay. Second. Mr. Milton, and then second by Mr. Gray. Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Uh, next time you have a truck out there with asphalt, uh, Grove Acres Road and Little Woodville Road, those got some pretty good pop up, as you have been out there.
Grove Acres and Little Wood.
Yeah. Thank you.
Uh, sorry, hang on, Robbie, right there in this area where we're talking about, on Little Woodville, there's some as well.
Okay.
Right there before, uh.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right before Holy Hill Drive.
Yes.
All right, I want to board, updates on, um, uh, striking on the project, um, say they came back with some change they wanna put some back to the plan, so we're submitting the final assembly, um, package back to State A on Wednesday morning. Um, York Road, the activation package was submitted last week. Um, we've already talked about the survey work that you all want to do, so it'll be completed now. Um, and then the last thing I have is Morgantown Road, uh, court activity finalizing those, those plans. Advertising will be April the twenty-fifth. And I got, uh, Mr. Daniel Johnson, we said, May twenty-eighth at ten o'clock at the building, for phase two of Morgantown.
When was that?
May twenty-eighth at ten o'clock AM. We will be opening bids for that Friday.
Okay. Appreciate the update.
Oh, and let me say something, right here too, is for, uh, just, uh, the State A funds that we continue to talk about, uh, each, uh, board meeting. We're gonna have to get together and go ahead and decide what State A fund, what we're gonna do, because if not, we're not gonna be getting the State A money. We're gonna lose our money, and we're not gonna, you know, we're gonna cut it down and everything, so, yeah, if no one else gonna submit projects, or what they want done, I'll see done, I shall have some that I need done, so. We, we need to go ahead and sit, sit, keep these things down, go.
Okay, you have recommendations? Uh, do you have some favorite district?
Uh, I don't have a favorite district, I can't, if I go up, I can draw a list.
Yeah, between you and Robbie.
Therein. So what happened was, we were waiting on the unit prices, the average unit prices for the first quarter, uh, of the year. I didn't get that until Friday afternoon. They sent it to me Friday afternoon, so I can follow up with the visit I gave last year, get the updated unit price. I think the recommendation was still the same as last year. And then I just emailed everybody a copy of the updated cost of the project. And to keep in mind, the project that we're gonna be submitting will include all the work associated with that project, including engineering. So the per mile will be higher than what we typically see when you got to do okay projects, so.
It'll be including what now?
It includes, for, for instance, when you, when you got to do certain, y'all just pave the roads.
Right.
And make sure, our projects include paving, striping, base repair, any leveling, any signage, and also gravel and shoulders and, and, so, I know it will be higher than what you got to.
So we can have that information and everything by next board meeting, so we can go ahead and try to get this done?
I have to report.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ford, at the top, but will you reference the, the available funds in that, please? I, I provide the status. Thank you.
All right, you have something else?
Yes, sir. Uh, uh, it's, uh, y'all, don't think hard, but, uh, this, this is my first trip. So, uh, I forgot to submit my meals for my, uh, my travel.
Oh, that, you're, you're good, that's just reimbursement, that's after, that's mine.
Just bring it, bring it up here to, uh, pay, right there.
You did yourself a fee.
Morning, board, I just have one.
Morning.
Just have one thing, uh, it's a new hire, Billy Newley, actually, a rehire. Uh, Billy Newley had a range, uh, twenty-nine boy in Allen, where angle rated thirty thousand five hundred seventy-six, has a I T specialist.
Uh, do you have the paperwork with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cause I, I don't have it.
Shane, y'all did leave some money in there for the housing.
For what?
For the housing.
Uh, I think that was worked out before he left.
They don't know.
Okay, I need a motion. Y'all hear what, you want me to spread it out? You, you wanna look at it?
No. Repeat what.
No, I'm just asking, he, he leaves some money in there for the rehire.
Yes.
Do we have to submit something to the board?
What he's gonna be doing, I T?
I think.
Part-time, man.
He's just part-time.
He, how long he been gone?
He's been gone since ninety days, he's been all over ninety days.
It was December, though.
There's something we gotta submit.
Eighteen week.
Uh, it's in December.
It's December twenty, thirty, something like that, yes. Okay. Okay, uh, I need a motion to, for, uh, this rehire on Billy Newley part-time. Did you get a mouse?
Some of, that we hired most of Bill's media part-time, it's just the power, so the rate is on that paper.
Forty, thirty thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars annual. Okay, second by Ms. Hudson. Uh, any discussion? I will approve, say aye. Aye. Motion carried.
That's all I have on this board here. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, board.
Morning.
Just giving y'all some updates on the airport. Um, the construction that the airport is doing right now, taxi relies should be completed before May tenth. Um, that will finish the F A construction projects that we have at the time, except for the one that's ongoing on the runway project. Uh, we just went through a surveillance inspection, and according to the F A inspector, we will have a letter in writing uh, before the eighteenth of this month, saying that they are clearing us of all L O Is, or letter investigation on the airport, which pretty much eliminates all the concerns that the F A had after they came back and looked at the markings that been put down and completed. Um, thank you for going to Washington on the art truck. Um, I did receive a letter saying that that was approved for nine hundred thousand dollars on the new art vehicle. I have also received an eight hundred thousand dollar grant from the state, uh, for new, building new set of T hangars on the airport. Um, I know there's a lot of concern about, you know, that grant and everything, but the board at the time, the airport commissioned plans on funding that through the airport itself, so we're not asking y'all for anything on that. It's more, uh, we're trying to do whatever we can to get this addressed. Um, other than that, I can answer any questions y'all may have, but the airport is getting busier and busier, and we're moving forward, so if y'all have any questions, we have an answer.
Oh, all right, Rich, I appreciate your hard work out there, and I'm, I'm glad y'all helped with that funding, uh, and, uh, you've worked through a lot of issues out there, uh, whether it be poor maintenance or construction, not your fault, but, uh, at any rate, I'm glad you got the certification back.
Yeah, so it says that on the eighteenth, he, when he got back in office, sent me the letter saying that we're all clear, so, um, from this point forward, we should be able to maintain and continue, so.
All right.
President Wilson got a question. Um, I'm with the airline service, are we hearing anything else on that?
Yes, so May second, I will be in Salt Lake, uh, oh, St. Salt Lake, St. George, Utah, uh, meet with SkyWest. Um, the new airline consultant has completely changed direction. Um, I've talked to Southern Airways, they're still in communication with the airport as well. Um, SkyWest is trying to partner with United to do flights from here to Houston instead of Dallas. Um, the reason why Houston is a possible fit is they have smaller jet service than Dallas does at the moment, so, um, it is still moving, um, and still moving in the right direction.
That's good, right. Now, we don't wanna give up on that, for sure.
We're not. We're gonna continue to push that through.
And Richard and I have talked about this from day one, it's very important that this is not rushed.
Right.
It, it's gotta be the right fit from day one. If it's a flop, it's gonna look bad on this board, it's gonna look bad on him, and I assure you that Richard wants. And I assure you that Richard wants it done right from the start, and that's what we've been doing.
Absolutely.
Well, uh, Mr. Milton, we gonna take all our recommendation from.
Yep.
Him.
It's all gonna be on me if it doesn't work.
It's gonna be on him, 'cause that's what we taking our recommendation from, him and nobody else. So, you're doing a great job, keep the good work up.
All right, y'all, can you add a question?
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Any more reports? Uh, we ready to go around the table? Mr. Gray.
Sure, uh, yeah. I wanna hold the board, we, we, is Miss Stephanie on the line?
Yes.
Miss Stephanie?
Stephanie?
About me?
Uh, well, then, uh, we, we gonna have to make a decision, uh, this is April, and, uh, we gonna have to make a decision what we gonna do about the swimming pool, 'cause it's getting close, and the game plan was to, uh, try to get, uh, the commissioner back, or whatever the case may be. But we don't need to be waiting till the last minute, because if you do that, then we gonna have a problem, uh.
Did you set up a meeting with the C E O? 'Cause we asked that you set up a meeting with the C E O to meet on the pool in five.
And, uh, they, uh, P A, uh, I think it was a report due, eh? When I met someone, somebody told me it was a report due about that, anybody know anything about that?
That's Stephanie, her that report.
Carezak.
It's due at the end of this month.
End of the month.
Stephanie, you there on mute still?
I'm here.
Okay. Uh, did you hear what he, he was asking about, the report on the, uh, Carezak money? This is.
Um, it was, yeah, it's due on April the thirtieth, I gotta do the report.
Uh, okay.
Okay, uh, my question was, uh, do the sheriff department have thirty thousand in their budget for a part-time employee?
Let me look at the.
But anyway, I'm gonna go on while she looking, 'cause I haven't had much today.
All right.
Uh, I, I do wanna congratulate, uh, South Carolina, and Utah, I mean, uh, UConn being on winning the college championship, and I simply goes out to the Jones family, the Woods family, uh, my family, the Gray family, the Rhodes family, the Kane family, the Simpson family, and to the West family. That was a young man, they found him in a hotel, I don't know how long he had been there, but I simply goes out.
Thank you, Rich, very interesting.
Okay, mine's a short two, first thing I have is Robbie, the rain event, do we get a non-rain event? Where we can, uh, go ahead and submit in the five hundred dollars for larger cities?
She's leaving on this morning, but.
Right, 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 'cause the money's sitting there waiting on us, we wanna get that money.
Yeah, they called last week.
Okay, good, good, sounds great. Um, that's the money that we went up, so I was bringing myself to and talk to Congressman Thompson and the rest of the Congress, uh, and people about the, uh, funding for larger cities, so the money just sitting there waiting on us, waiting for the rain event, so.
Okay.
We'll get that too. Uh, another thing else, um, I just wanted to let the sport know, make sure your applications are in for your summer workers by May first. And if not by May first, then we're gonna go ahead and submit other names for those slots, so try to get your application in by May first. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, everything I have is already been taken care of.
Okay, Paige, do you have anything?
Um, I just need to have the, uh, shared blanket bond, um, spread across the minutes.
All right, need a motion for a blanket.
We spread the share.
Blanket bond.
Blanket bond.
Blanket bond across the minutes.
Move by Mr. Gray. Second by Miss Hudson, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried. All right, Ms. Lewis.
Yes. The board authorized us to forward on the objections on the, as I said, chargebacks for six landowners here. We received responses back on four. They approved three of the requests, you know, that they talked about, but they said removed, and then on the third one, they, uh, said that it just, it was their opinion, it should still be disallowed and cannot be reversed because of unpaid income tax obligation at the state. So, do you want to submit those all, they take a second look, which thankfully three of them, they did find that the objection was.
Wanted, okay.
So, um, we just need to have those approved and processed.
So, look at them?
Sure.
All right, you, you need the names read out for that, or?
I didn't look at it.
Oh.
That, that's fine, the three, the top three are the ones that they authorized.
All right. Juan Wilkins at, uh, eleven sixteen Main Street, um, Jackie LaShawn Fortenberry, thirty-two Hedges Plantation. And, uh, John Paul Collard at five Cumberland Road have been approved, is that right? And you, do we mention the one that was disallowed?
Yes, sir, true.
There's, uh, Criscilla Clay at ten sixteen Lotus Drive.
I'm good, I'm good.
So, we're just waiting on two more.
Okay.
The one that was disallowed on Lotus Drive.
Was there a motion?
Not yet.
I need a motion. Move by, I need a second.
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Gray. Any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried.
The bottom? Oh, yeah, that's, sorry, we have that, uh, for March, uh, we need to have these, uh, tax redemption settlement statement for March, for a couple minutes.
So, move. Move by Mr. Milton. Need a second, second by Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried. Uh, Ms. Slower.
Did the document include the amount that Southwest, did I see that? Depreciation, was that on there? Just making sure. Um.
It was?
Was it not?
Was it on that page?
Southwest.
I mean, I had to look through.
Southwest plant.
Is it million dollar?
All right, what, did you have something else, God?
I don't know, nothing says, oh, I mean, I was just making sure that, that got done, so.
Did you have something else while they were there?
Uh, yes.
A title attorney contacted me.
Southwest is, excuse me, Southwest Arizona.
Just making sure. So, applications are gonna be received and approved within the next few board, to, to board members. Make sure you get your applications, or get people to come in if you have. Um, the title attorney contacted me, there was a deed of trust that the county executed back in two thousand and five, and it was doing some research on it, of some sort program with, uh, you know, with HUD. And the deed of trust never actually made it to the minutes in the, it was with a bank of B D K, it was actually doing financing. Um, nonetheless, the county had signed, they were the, the creditor on deed of trust, it was not, never made it to the minutes. They are requesting a cancellation of the deed of trust, uh, to close out a sale. We don't have any history of it, Southwest didn't have any history of it. So, in fact, it wasn't on our minutes, in my mind, it's a void agreement, so I'm asking the board to let us ask the court to declare it void, it's a whatnot on minutes.
What is this deed of trust on?
So, two thousand and five, Yvonne Nasser was the.
Something we'll ask you about, about.
I'm not sure if you asked me or not, but, uh, the title attorney asked about it.
So, the motion need to be what?
To authorize us to ask the judge to have it declared void, since it's not on our minutes. It's, it's void, 'cause I'm not.
I know just what you just said.
Okay, I need a second.
I mean, I looked to see if we were owed any money, we were not, and, and according to the, to the actual grant, it was between B and K and, and, uh, and a person with HUD and something like that, and we should, I, I never even heard of it. No money for us, and I could afford it. If you are holding, if you're holding a deed of trust, you don't cancel any of the requests, actually, you can cancel it.
All right, second by Mr. Milton, any more discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried.
Uh, the attorney for the school district reached out to me, evidently, they asked us to, if we would reappoint, uh, Dr. Blunt, which we did on February twenty-first of this year. Um, in the minutes, it said that we would reappoint her from August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four until August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-nine, because our minutes had, that's when her term was up. Their minutes showed that her term was up in February, none of this particularly matters, was it our, if, if this is the case, was it our intention to allow her to stay on board until August twenty-ninth, which in my mind, our decision was to reappoint her and let her stay on board. So, if that's the case, we'd need a motion clarifying that, you know.
So, her appointment is until August twenty twenty-nine?
That's what our minutes reflect, their minutes reflect February, again, it's not that important if we had no intention to not let her vote until August.
So, what the motion need to be?
Just to clarify that we wanted her to remain in office, you know, from February until August twenty-nine, when her term starts.
So.
Second.
All right.
I think we're right, if we could just do a clarification.
Okay.
I think her minutes are right.
Correct that.
Just bring that to a question, so if we didn't do what we just did, that means she couldn't vote?
They, they were not gonna let her vote unless we clarified that we didn't want her out of office. Again, we could've gotten into a match about who, you know, what minutes were right or wrong, or whatever, but in my mind, it's easier for us to clarify.
When she, uh, took the remaining term of somebody and then had her own term?
Yes.
Exactly. Now, we, we, I think, feel like our math was correct, that we made her finish someone else's term and then start somebody, so I believe you're right, I think they're wrong.
And that's the way you hope to do that?
That's already how you're supposed to do it, I don't care if.
So, nice, great.
Yeah, yeah, that's the easiest thing, is just to say, yeah, but, you know, clarify that there was supposed to be no gap, or.
No.
Okay, all in favor? Uh, motion carried.
We need, plus we had a question.
Reading, reading motion, I have a second. All right, Ms. Slower, you have anything else? Okay, Mr. Washington, you still on the phone?
Yes, I am, uh, oh, I did take the close out that Mr. Jackson's dossier had completed, there are some open positions, and it is in there, but it's for the, uh, the D, the doubtful meeting that was for May the fourteenth and fifteenth, and I was asking permission to pay the thirty-five dollar registration fee, it's just like that then.
Okay, I need, okay, motion by, discussion, second by Mr. Gray, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, motion carried.
On the fee, attorney.
That's all, all right, thank you.
Stephanie, did you wanna ask about the C D?
No, I do need to ask permission from the board for being a condition of business for this month, for this, um, interest fund, or a six-month D V for our exit, uh, uh, zero, zero amount, or at least a million dollars.
Okay, uh, did, did, you already shop the interest rates?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Which, the statute provides that you ask your county depository for a rate, if not, you can use the, you know, you can go to a, uh, like a, a U S Treasury or whatever, U S Treasury's a five percent, the Concordia Bank offer was four percent, so it's, you know, so. A pretty good rate.
Yeah, okay.
If, you know, according to the law, if they weren't, you know, you negotiate a rate, and if they're not willing to, then you can put it out. But, I don't know, it's hard to, I would say if they didn't give us a good rate, we could do it.
All right, do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
To allow?
I think it's one oh-nine, you know, if you wanna put anything from fiscal recovery, I don't know if we're gonna need that, within six months or not, if you need that.
I would certainly think that we need to do that, that means to sit there and not make a whole lot of, of money on it, on the term. Oh, who made the motion? Angela? And seconded by Wes, okay. Uh, all in favor? Uh, motion carried. All right, anything else, Mr. Washington?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, I need to spread this across the minutes, part of the document, this is the fuel man she talked about earlier, sixteen thousand fifty-one dollars and nineteen cents.
Move that we straighten, fuel man across the minutes.
Okay, move by Mr. Gray, second by Miss Hudson, any discussion?
What's up?
Okay, second.
Okay, move by Mr. Gray, second by Miss Hudson, any discussion?
What's up?
Is it more than that?
No, it's awful.
It's all clear, man.
All right, all in favor? Uh, motion carried. Okay, I think that clears everything, I really didn't have anything, we covered mostly, everything I was concerned about, uh, during the course of the meeting. Uh, I think we need a motion for, we need a closed determination?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, public comment?
Any public comments? Public comments? Okay, now I need a motion for closed determination.
So.
Move by Miss Hudson? Second by Mr. Gray. All in favor? All in favor? Uh, okay.